Good evening. Welcome to the Joint Plan Commission and Village Board Meeting for the Village of Waukesha for June 10th, 2021, beginning at 6:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Buchholz, Heckers, Piala, Webb, White, Dorr, German, Gurecki, Kalinski, Stigler.
All right, thank you. Open Meetings Law and Compliance Check, the agenda was posted. And distributed to all news media requesting notification in accordance with open meetings laws and posted on or before, and that should say Wednesday, June 9th, 2021. So posted?
It should say the 9th and it was posted correctly.
Thank you.
Sandy Ham, West 230, South 3827, Milky Way Road. I'll get to the pictures in a second. I just wanted to say I thought the hearing this morning, it wasn't negative. It went well, in my view, it certainly wasn't negative, so we'll see how that ends up. Another six weeks to go. And I did want to comment on the proposed barn for Milky Way Road. The neighbors that I've spoken to are enthusiastic about that property and what's going on there, so we couldn't be happier about that proposal. You all, I think, got an email from me several weeks ago about this issue with permits, pools, and my neighbor, I was trying to prevent the situation that I have now. In fact, I didn't keep pictures for myself, but... So, the permit, the ordinance calls for certain things to be on the application. I have a copy of the permit application. Some of the things that are required are not on there. But more than anything else, I mean, on that last page, the picture of the ladder, I mean, it's, it doesn't, I don't think that's proper, but, you know. But in the, Section 831 on swimming pools, it talks about that the pool is to be, "A pool erected on top of the ground before filling shall have the pool concentrated by means of a solid wood fence, blah, 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 blah." And let's see, where's the one about a budding? Yeah, Section D3. So, you can see from the picture, the pool's up, the water's in, the kids are in the pool, and that's what we look at. And I don't think that conforms at all to the ordinance, so I'm not expecting anything to happen tonight, but I tried to prevent this situation, and this is now what we have. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? All right, hearing done, we will move on to Item Six, Approval of Previous Minutes from Meetings. The first is May 13th, 2021. Is there a motion? I have a motion from Commissioner Buchholz. And a second from Commissioner Piala. I'll start the discussion with just a few items. This, towards the bottom of Page One, under Discussion and Possible Action Items for the motion, "Trustee Stigler moved to recommend to the Board approval and rezone request with conditions in the Planner Report, seconded by Commissioner Piala. Motion carried four to zero." I would like to add to that, following the four to zero, an open perenn, Buchholz, Stigler, White, and Piala, period, Dur, Heckers, and Webb not voting as not members of the Planning Commission during the public hearing, closed perenn. And then similar, motion carried three to zero at the Board level, to be followed with an open perenn, Dur, Stigler, Kalinski, Gurecki not voting as not a member of Village Board during the public hearing. I look to do that in this case only because so many people didn't vote that attended, and if somebody looks at this five, or seven, or 10 years from now trying to understand clarification for one reason or another, rather than them trying to figure out why so many people didn't vote, that might help the issue, so... I thought it would be beneficial for us to add that. I think that was all that I had for this. And if nobody has anything else, I'll send that to you for, to be added for tomorrow, and we can add that. Any other discussion for the May 13th, 2021 minutes? All right, hearing none. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to approve as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You are not here? All right, very good, thank you. The next set of minutes that we have are for March 12th, 2020. This gets a little more dicey. I have remaining on the Board from that time period and here this evening, Trustee German, myself, Trustee Stigler, Commissioner White, and Commissioner Piala, so that's all that should be voting on these set of minutes. If somebody has a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 12th, 2020 meeting.
And a motion from Commissioner White. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
From Trustee German. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And next on the agenda, the minutes from June 11th, 2020, and as I understand it, voting on this set of minutes would be Trustee German, myself, Trustee Stigler, Trustee Kalinski, Commissioner White, and Commissioner Piala. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the June, I forgot the date, cancel it, see if either, but I...
June 11th?
June 11th.
2020.
All right, make the motion.
All right. By, by Trustee Stigler and Commissioner Piala. There is one item here that, for correction, towards the bottom of Page One, where it says "Trustee Stigler will chair this part of the meeting," and then the bolded section, "Discussion and Possible Action on an Amendment to the Site Plan Plan of Operation for Waukesha Storage, Owner Jeff Penosian, Tax Key WAKT 1324991001." That should actually, just that bolded section should be moved to the top of Page Nine, immediately following President Fisher Returns. I looked at this with, with the clerk, and everything following that does pertain to the Site Plan Plan of Operation for Amy Hudson, and then that will be in the proper place, so that'll just be an adjustment in the, and amended. Any other discussion? All right, then I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on. Discussion and Possible Action, Item Seven. Hearing Number One, Notice is hereby given that a joint public hearing involving the Village of Waukesha Plan Commission and the Village of, and the Village, and the Waukesha Village Board will be held on Thursday, June 10th, 2021, beginning at 6:30 PM, at the Waukesha Village Hall located at W-250, S-3567 Center Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, to hear a rezone request from petitioner Tim Larson, Shops at Sunset LLC, for a property located at S-30W-24896, Sunset Drive, Tax Key WAKT 1335942002, for the purpose of rezone from B3 General Business District with conditions to B3 General Business District, amending conditions to allow right-turn exit-only access onto Sunset Drive. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Planner Malarki, do you have some introductory comments for us?
I do, thank you. There's a, there's a couple of public hearings on the agenda tonight, and a few action items related to the overall request for Shops at Sunset, so I'm going to give a broad overview of everything at once to, to kind of keep it simple here, so, because it's, it's all multi-faceted and connected together. They're requesting approval in total of a rezoning, a conditional use amendment, Site Plan Plan of Operation amendment, and then also an amendment to the Village Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, that relates to streets, sidewalks, and other public places, related to street access and distance between access points. Again, the whole idea here is to, is to allow a right-turn exit-only onto Sunset from, from their property, and I'll bring the property up overhead so you can see it. Shops at Sunset is the, is the white building here, and so the new access point would be coming out at this location. Just a little bit of history for those that weren't around at the time. They did receive approvals from then the Town of Waukesha in 2018 for a rezoning, for a conditional use site plan approval to, for, for a restaurant, a drive, a restaurant with a drive-through at the far west end of the building, so that's already been approved. They don't need approval for that. The only thing we're really talking about tonight is the change for the exit onto Sunset Drive. We, at the time that they, they submitted their conditional use and rezone application back in 2018, they were also proposing an exit-only drive onto Sunset, and it was removed when it was pointed out that it didn't conform to Chapter 36, which required a minimum distance between access points. They were also before the Plan Commission and the Board at the end of last year, between October and December, for the same issue, there was a different composition of Plan Commission and Board at the time, but they did request essentially the same, the same application was before us, and so this is the same thing as last time. What happened last time is that the first item that was up was the consideration of amendments to Chapter 36 for the access point distance, and that was denied by the Board at the time, I think the vote was two to two, if I recall correctly, and so it did not pass at the time. And so, the, the rezone and the conditional use action wasn't taken on those because it was a moot point, because it wasn't allowed under Chapter 36, at any rate. So in terms of the rezoning, there is special zoning on the property. The northwest, the northeast, and the southeast corners of Sunset Drive and Prairie Avenue all have special conditional B3 zoning. Back in 1999, the Town, in coordination with Waukesha County, put special restrictions on that, that limited certain uses and access so that this was all a coordinated development. Since that time, our property, Shops at Sunset, is on the northwest corner, since that time there's been some annexations, and so this, this, and then the, and the Berkshire Senior Housing, but behind are the only remaining portion that's in the village now from the northwest corner. It's, the zoning, the conditional zoning has been amended over the years. In 2002, it was, it was amended to reduce the minimum project area from five acres to two acres, so you could propose a smaller project. In 2004, fast food restaurants was taken off the prohibited list so that you could, you could have fast food restaurants. Also in 2004, the number of outlots was changed, and then again, as I mentioned, in 2018, the petitioner, for the subject property, removed restaurants with drive-through lanes from the prohibited list that allowed the restaurants. So that was the zoning change in 2018 that happened. So essentially, they're asking to amend the zoning again, that conditional zoning, to, related to access. There's a section in the enrolled ordinance, enrolled ordinance number 153-129, Ordinance Three, Exhibit A3, talks about direct access to Sunset Drive, and so Exhibit A, Paragraph B, is proposed to be amended, and if you're following along in my staff report, it's on middle of Page Two, basically talks about cross easements, and I'll just quickly read this. "Cross easements, as may be required, will be provided so that the access to the properties is available and access to Prairie Avenue is limited to one access point, 400 feet north of the center line intersection of Sunset Drive and Prairie Avenue, and opposite the access point, proposed for the east side of Prairie Avenue. The intersection shall provide for additional right-of-way dedication and installation of excel-decel lanes as described in Exhibit One, Figure Two." And then, the second paragraph is where the change is proposed. "At a minimum, additional land shall be dedicated for right-of-way purposes and acceleration, deceleration lanes provided along Sunset Drive as described in Exhibit One, Figure One. On Sunset Drive, access shall be located at one location, 500 feet from the intersection of Sunset Drive and Prairie Avenue, which is approximately equal distant, equal, equal distance between the intersection of Prairie Avenue and Center Drive on Sunset Drive." And here's what they're proposing to add. "And that an additional exit-only drive to Sunset Drive may be installed from the western 100 feet, 150 feet of parcel WAKT 135942002." And then it goes on to finish the paragraph. So, that additional language would allow them to install this additional exit-only drive if the, the conditional zoning is amended. I'll just quickly go through the conditional use section. I know that's the second public hearing, but again, it all kind of goes together. The, the building, it's, as it stands right now, it's a, it's a commercial building, there's a variety of tenants that includes a real estate office, an eye clinic, an insurance agency, barber shop, mobile phone store, and a cafe. The west end of the building remains vacant today, including the approved restaurant with the drive-through. Again, the most recent approvals were in 2018 for the, for the conditional use. In addition to that approval, it allows, also allowed them to construct some parking in the back of the property, and then some, some landscaping as well. They are proposing this, this exit-only drive onto Sunset, which would remove basically four parking stalls from the, from the current site. There exists right now 59 existing spaces with 21 spaces in the rear, and they also, they also have, have spaces leased on the property to the east through easement, and so in total, there's 170 spaces that, that serves this property, which is more than enough for the, for the uses, both existing and proposed. And just as a, sort of an overview of what the conditional use permit says, the previous approval basically limited it to the property, subject to the amended conditions of the B3 zoning. It's limited to Tim Larson doing businesses, Shops at Sunset, to allow operation of a drive-through lane serving food and beverages to customers other than at a booth or a table for a quick-service casual restaurant, including a single drive-through lane and service window, and additional parking in the rear of the building and the subject property. The use shall be in accordance with the plans, documents, and specifications presented to the Town at the time, September 13th, 2018, and October 11th, 2018, subject to the plan of operation, which is, the restaurant with the drive-through opens 6:00 AM to midnight, Sunday through Saturday. The tenant space is limited to 2,000 square feet. Outdoor storage is prohibited. Drive-throughs limited to maximum of 30 vehicles per hour, and they're required to have a visible sign posted in the rear so that there's no right turn to the Berkshire Senior Housing. I won't go into the amendments of the code to Chapter 36. We can handle that when we come up with that as part of the, part of the agenda item. I know Engineer Gennelli has some comments on that, so that's all I have is an overview.
Okay, very good. Is there someone here from the petitioner this evening?
I'm Tim Larson, representing Shops on Sunset.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
The floor is yours, if there's anything that you would like to introduce with the opening of the public hearing?
Certainly. I appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to present again for the request. Our goal is to, as I meant, as Sean mentioned, to rezone, to allow for a, an exit onto Sunset. We have prepared a traffic study, both, one that was originally done on October in 2018. We followed that up with an updated study as of November 11th, 2021. Hopefully that was in your packet as well. We've identified through that study that, from a safety perspective, you know, for those tra, you know, traffic on to Sunset and those entering onto Sunset, as well as pedestrians, that it's a safe exit based upon the location that's there. We do believe that it complements the other, the previous conditional use that was approved for the drive-through and the additional parking. So again, we would ask that you consider those components as well. I would like to share with you, if I may, from a, maybe a broader perspective. I would share with you that in 2016, the estimated market value of the property was That has typically gone down every year through, you know, from 17, 18, 2018, the value was $1,009, 2019, the million, $2,001. This last year is estimated value of 2.28. And I share with you that, understand that the property is, is 54% occupied. I would share with you that, based upon our occupancy as of January of this year, which we had $94,000 of income, that 94,000 on the market, or the estimated value, puts a value, or a cap value of about 4.4%. If you're familiar with real estate on a credit tenant, a credit tenant value is not going to get to 4%. Our value is closer to six, or, excuse me, our, our cap value is 8% based upon the local markets that we have. My point here is, is if you value the current income on this val, on this property of 94,000 that we have this year, the value is approximately $1.178 million. Again, from, as it relates to the petition of the zoning, our goal obviously has been to reposition the property, add value to the property, increase the occupancy there, which we believe increases, obviously, the, the value, increases the tenant base, and so we feel that, again, as a complement to our previous conditional use for the drive-throughs, this will enhance and allow us to further increase the ability to re-tenant the property. I would share with you, previously in 2018, we had already gone to potential lease with a Jimmy John's. They, I wouldn't say they busted the lease, but they decided not to move forward without the exit. They've kind of moved away. They still remain in the wings, but again, without the, the exit, they have declined to move forward. I would share that we do have a showing with this next coming week with a group called Smoothie King. Again, we feel it's a good complement to, to the center, for the community. We feel that that, again, will kind of kickstart some of our leasing, which we do believe, again, can each add to the value of the property, add to the tax base that we, again, we, we tried to accomplish, so. Any questions that I may ask, if that's my statement?
Well, let's open it up to the public, and if they have a series of questions, we'll note them down and bring you back up to answer them. So this is an open public hearing. Anybody here to speak on this issue for the Shops at Sunset?
Apologies, I do say, we do have our engineer for a traffic study. If you do have some questions related to the, to the study, John Beaveritz is here to answer any questions you may have.
Sandy Ham, West 230, South 3827, Milky Way Road. I have just one question. I heard the gentleman say that they'd done the traffic studies and stuff and determined that it was safe, and I just consider that to be a relative term, and I'd like to hear if he could expand on what that means. And clearly, we're adding another intersection on Sunset, and maybe it is safe, maybe it's safer, I don't know, but without something more than just the word "safe," I don't really know how I can measure that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's just give it a minute and see if there's any other questions so that we can group them together, but thank you for coming up. Any questions specifically from the Plan Commission or the Village Board?
Mike, again, I'm going to ask the traffic.
Your mic, I don't think it's on.
I'm new at, I'm new at this. The traffic study appeared to be done from 11:30 in the afternoon to 12:30, and then again from 4:30 to 5:30, if, if I had the right traffic study. And I looked at Culvers, and apparently, they are the busiest from 5:30 to 8:00. They're an ice cream shop. So I was just wondering how many people were going to be pulling out onto Sunset, at what time is that going to cause kind of a snarl there?
Yeah, it's a good question. So from a traffic standpoint, we did two studies, as mentioned, one in 2018 and one in 2020. The way I did it in 2020, we also did traffic counts at the Culvers driveways itself, so we measured the drive-through operation at that time. COVID was in place, the dining room was closed, so drive-through activity was very busy, so we documented the queues on that. There was concern that the queues would back up on the Sunset. So, we did traffic counts out there in November. We did it from 11:03 to 12:03, also from 4:03 to 5:03, as mentioned, which was the peak hour of the traffic volumes on Sunset Drive, so that's why we did those hours, primarily also to capture the peak lunch hour of Culvers and the peak dinner hour of Culvers, Culvers as well. So we did capture that 4:03 to 5:03 timeframe. Regarding safety, is a question on regarding safety, we did a crash study...
You could just step up a little closer.
Sure.
Thank you.
We did a crash study or accident study along this section. We took a look at the Culvers driveways as well as the current access on Sunset. The statewide crash rate for intersections is 0.88, and the crash rate at the Culvers driveway is actually .18, so far less than the statewide average, and the crash rate for the main driveway is .07. Again, the crash, average crash rate is 0.88. So again, the crashes out there are very minimal from the standpoint of what's the current statewide average is out there. Another thing regarding safety is, once we add that right turn out, it is only a right turn out movement, nobody turns in or lefts out will be allowed. It'll be signed regulatory, in other words, right turn only is regulatory sign, so you would get a ticket if you turn left out of that driveway. The volume of that driveway being that it's mostly servicing the drive-through outbound traffic is about one vehicle every three to four minutes, so it's a very low volume right turn movement out of the development. So hopefully it addresses the safety aspect of things.
Could you just run through those numbers again, because they go by so quick? So the average crash rate at this type of intersection across the state is?
0.88.
So a little less than one?
Correct.
And then the current crash rate at Culvers is?
0.18. So substantially less.
Okay, so substantially less.
And the crash rate at the main access to all the development just east of here, that location, is 0.07.
Okay.
From a number standpoint, we took a look at crashes from 2015 through 2019, all four years. There's only two crashes at the main driveway where the cursor is, and there's only four crashes at the Culvers driveway in that four-year timeframe, from a number standpoint.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good for now.
A question I have is, the hours that were selected for the traffic study, did you select the hours, or did you work with Culvers as what their, when their busy times really are?
Good question, we did both. We... We, according with Culvers, define what their busy times are. We also do traffic studies for Culvers throughout the state. So their busiest timeframe is typically their lunch hour as well as evening rush hour as well. Every Culvers has a different peak hour, obviously, depending on location. So we took a look at really their average throughout the state. We did that.
Yeah, because there's, it seems to be a sizable backup there all the time. And that's my concern is not the crash rate. I, I think everybody's sitting there behind everybody else. And the aggravation that you're going to have with people backing up and somebody trying to cut in and then people coming down center to try to get on to Culvers and you.
Yeah, and that's kind, and it is kind of a thing, especially with COVID. Culvers has been very successful through COVID because the drive-through's been open, especially for fish fries on a Friday, that type of thing. So Culvers has seen a lot of success, so to speak, during the COVID timeframe, which is, we're seeing continuing as well with the drive-through operations. So if we turn the clock back to 2018, that would not be the case.
You can't count that.
Obviously.
Yeah.
So, but as, as we get out of COVID, things get back to normal, once the dining rooms open up, we expect their drive-through to basically calm down to what it was pre-COVID.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public or the Plan Commission or the Village Board?
I got, I have a question. The last time that this issue was brought up, there was some, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was an estimation that the traffic through the parking lot itself was one vehicle every two to three minutes?
Just to clarify, that was only for the traffic used in the new right turn out. In other words, the volumes assigned to that new right turn driveway that's being proposed, that would be one vehicle every two to three minutes using that.
So basically, the volume of cars coming out here, we want vehicle every two to three minutes.
And would, do you have any idea what the, what the actual rate of use is with the current exit?
Yes, we do. Do you have a copy of our study from November of 2020 in your packet by chance?
I probably do, but not.
I can point you to that.
At my fingertips.
Okay.
You do.
So Exhibit 3, it's basically a schematic which shows the turning movements for the.
What page would that be?
Past all the texts and tables, you'll see a bunch of exhibits. You'll see Exhibit 1, map, Exhibit 2, transportation system. Exhibit 3 is the titled 2020 background traffic volumes. On that schematic, you will see arrows and numbers which essentially represent the volume of traffic per movement at that Sunset Drive intersection with the main location you're talking about. The numbers without parentheses represent the lunch hour, basically, from 11:30 to 12:30. The numbers with parentheses represent the weekday PM peak hour from 4:30 to 5:30.
And that's per minute?
No, that's per hour, I'm sorry. So from 11:30 to 12:30 is the first number and then the number of parentheses is from 4:30 to 5:30, that full hour. That's existing, what's out there today.
And that is Exhibit?
3.
3.
So if you would compare that to, if you pull out Exhibit 6 in that same packet. Exhibit 6 is titled, "Your 2020 Build Traffic Volumes." That includes the quick service restaurant with the drive-through, that traffic, and it shows the volume assigned to that new right out driveway. So the vehicles assigned new right out drive, we're showing about 20 vehicles turning right out during the lunch hour and then 15 vehicles turning right out from 4:30 to 5:30.
Just wanted to mention, if any of you are not on Facebook, Facebook tells you how busy the restaurants are at what time. So if you want to go, it tells you. And I, I looked at both Jimmy John's, which you didn't have it, Jimmy John's didn't have it, but Culvers did and they said between 6:00 and 8:00. They were the busiest, so.
Sure.
So Exhibit 3 indicates that there's 15 cars per hour on the current exit, 20 during peak hours, correct?
That'd be the current right turn volume in, in other words, eastbound, the northbound right turn movement.
Okay, so 45 and 10 and 35.
That's exiting, correct, yeah. So the current driveway, exiting driveway traffic, correct?
And that's?
That's traffic that's all from the Shops at Sunset, the Senior Living Apartments and St. Vincent de Paul. All three of those developments kind of feed into that intersection.
Okay, and that, that's insufficient?
Well, that's what's there today. So those are the volumes that are at this intersection.
Right.
So right now, we have 45 turning right out in the morning and 35 turning right out during the evening.
Per hour?
Per hour, correct.
Lunch hour and the evening, 4:30 to 5:30, yep.
And you, you anticipate that increasing with the occupancy of this center?
Once, then once the end cap is occupied with a quick service restaurant, Jimmy John's of similar nature with a drive-through, that volume at the intersection will increase slightly as well as the volume for the right turnout will be added as well for the drive-through traffic exiting.
Do you have any prediction as to what the rate of increase would be?
You can deduct that when you compare Exhibit 3 to Exhibit 6. So if you would just compare those two exhibits, you'll see there's a increase in traffic volume, obviously.
So the, the traffic that's leaving the proposed exit, that is the anticipated increase?
That's correct, yes, yep. That's new traffic, it's not there today.
So if it was not there, we would then expect with the current exit, 65 and 50?
Exactly, correct, yes, yep.
Okay.
I mean, no doubt that the, the intent is to increase traffic. Any other questions? Plan Commission?
I have one, I have one real quick question. Is the, the addition of that does not include any lengthening of the acceleration lane at all, correct?
That is correct.
Mr. President, I got one too. Is there, if this would be passed, would there be any additions or corrections would have to be in landscaping that they were going to be putting through there at all? Any more needs or trees that might be taken down?
Additional landscaping based on what they're removing? We, let's see, I don't. I guess I have not done a calculation on the, on the landscaping requirements. Do you guys know offhand what's, what needs to be removed for plant material? Yeah, I'm speaking to the applicant.
Yeah, he's on his way up.
Sorry about that. Not totally aware, I think we would do our best to avoid any, obviously, any of the big trees. We would.
There's a berm here with a couple of shrubs.
We would, yeah. Our goal would be to replace those, relocate those.
Replacing kind?
Yes.
So in terms of landscape points, whatever you would take out, you wouldn't have a problem replacing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and again, the goal with kind of the, a little bit of the angle, angle to the, to the drive is kind of twofold. One, not necessarily creating a, a speed lane, but certainly prevents people from turning right in there. That's the goal in addition to the signage, but also gives them an opportunity to, instead of having to make a hard 90-degree, it gives them a little bit of an angle to get out into traffic a little bit more efficiently, so.
I've got a question about, didn't we have a problem with the fire hydrant there at some point? Would we discuss whatever happened with that problem?
We would relocate that as required, as necessary. So we're prepared to deal with that, yes.
So yeah, anything would be conditioned on, I'm getting approval from the city of Waukesha to relocate that.
Okay, any other question I got? We're crossing a sidewalk here now that, how are we going to control pedestrian traffic there with getting run over? For lack of a better word, but, you know, at the, at the other entrance, you have an intersection there with crosswalk. Here, we're putting a driveway right across the side with existing sidewalk, correct?
Right, they would, there'd be a sign requiring them to yield to pedestrians.
One more time from the public?
And I do need to remind the commissioners, although it may come up in the other hearings, if you're thinking of different conditions or things like that, we have to do it as part of the public hearing. We can't bring up stuff after the fact anymore, especially on the conditional use one. So Sean, you want to comment on, I know this is only the first hearing.
Yeah, the only thing I want to comment on, this is the rezoning, the details of the site plan and conditional use. There's another public hearing for that and we may not have any additional comments, but that would be the time to, to, to get those, you know, conditions in.
Okay. From the public? From the Plan Commission? And from the Village Board? Hearing no comments from the public, the Plan Commission or the Village Board, I will close this public hearing. And that will take us to Item 8. Discussion on possible action on a rezone request for petitioner Tim Larson, Shops at Sunset LLC, for a property located at S30W24896 Sunset Drive, tax key WAKT1335942002, a rezone from B3 General Business District with conditions to B3 General Business District amending conditions to allow right turn exit only access onto Sunset Drive. And this is for discussion by the Plan Commission and the Village Board. Is there any further discussion?
Would it be appropriate for us to deal with the ordinance change first? I mean, if that doesn't pass, what we're doing here is futile.
So he's, what he's asking is to table this item and move to that item further down the?
Sure, we can do that.
I, I think the progression makes sense.
Okay.
That's number 11.
Do you need a motion in that direction then, or?
So we would move Item Number 8 to... And then move on to the public hearing for the conditional use?
Could, you could do that. You could have the public hearing for both, get everything out of the way and then move on. The first action item then would be the Chapter 36 amendments.
Can do that. So you would like to make a motion to move Item 8 to follow Item 11, is that right?
Yeah, move Item 11 up.
It would also require the action on the conditional use and site plan to be moved behind Item 11 as well. So 11 would be moved in front of number?
My motion would be to move Number 11 before Number 8.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Well, is this going to be a motion by the Plan Commission, right?
And I don't think we need to, we can just say if there's no objection.
All right, very good.
The request, I don't want to have motion after motion after motion on procedural.
All right.
If there's no objection, Mr. Chairman, I think you could, or Mr. President, you could, you know, just.
Very fine. Is there an object, an objection? Hearing none, moving on to Item 9. Hearing Number 2, notices hereby given of a joint public hearing involving the Village of Waukesha Plan Commission and the Village of Waukesha Board will be held on Thursday, June 10th, 2021, beginning at 6:30 PM at the Waukesha Village Hall located at W250 S3567 Center Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, to hear a conditional use request for petitioner Tim Larson, Shops at Sunset LLC, for the property located at S30W24896 Sunset Drive, tax key WAKT1335942002, to amend the existing conditional use permit and site plan plan of operation for a drive-through lane associated with a quick serve restaurant to allow right turn exit only access onto site, onto Sunset Drive. And I will open this public hearing. Planner Malarkey, do you have any other introductory comments for this one in particular?
No, I, I did go over the conditional use and site plan, the existing conditions. The only thing I would add is what we heard during the last hearing is that there was mention that the petitioner has agreed to replace any landscaping disturbed by the right turn only in kind. And then I was also mentioned that there would be an additional sign installed for yield to pedestrians at the sidewalks. So those I would be looking to add as conditions into my, into the approval conditions if it's, if it's approved as, as part of the, the discussion.
Okay, very good. Petitioner, is there anything else you'd like to add? Okay, he has expressed that he does not have anything else to add as it pertains to the conditional use. The public hearing is open. Anybody from the public that would like to speak on the conditional use? Any questions or comments from the Village Board or the Plan Commission? Any issues from the public? Last opportunity from the Plan Commission? And the Village Board? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, thank you.
What was the recommendation as to where we go from here?
I believe from here, we would probably go to Item 11 for the amendment to Chapter 36. So moving on to Item 11, discussion on possible action on the amendments to Chapter 36, streets, sidewalks and other public places of the Village of Waukesha Code of Ordinances proposed by petitioner Tim Larson, Shops at Sunset LLC, for the property located at S30W24896 Sunset Drive, tax key WAKT13345942002. That was WAKT1335942002, to allow the Village Board discretion for approval of additional egress points from a property. Planner Malarkey?
I'm handing it off to Chris for this.
All right.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. I'll take this one.
Engineer Genelli?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. I don't want to necessarily rehash what Sean had mentioned earlier about the need to change Chapter 36. In essence, what's happening is the current ordinance has specific language in it that relates to distance between arterial and collector streets of which Center and Prairie are. And those distances would prohibit egress in, in a driveway, basically, to this particular property. So the applicant is requesting to add some additional language to Chapter 36 that would allow this. And, and if you've got my report, the amendment, amendment to Chapter 36 basically would be changed by the language that I have in red. Hopefully, everybody's got a color copy of that, but I'll, I'll kind of read what that would be modified to. Section 36.3 would be permits for access to and alterations in collector and arterial highways. And the change would read permits for ingress and egress to and alterations in. And the change would read permits for ingress and egress to and alterations in collector and arterial highways. Pretty simple change. The second change is dealing with access points, and in essence, allowing the, the change to read access point means a constructed vehicular pathway to and/or from a single parcel of land adjacent to the highway. And then the third change is really a sentence at the end of the, of the section, which reads an additional egress may be permitted if approved by the Village Board. We must note that the code as written does not allow the flexibility that may be necessary in a case of Sunset Drive in particular. This corridor is a high-volume, relatively low-speed road with numerous driveways to commercial and residential properties in the area. We believe that its proposed language will provide the flexibility without sacrificing the intent of the ordinance and overall traffic safety. So I'll, I'll take any questions or anything if you need.
Very good, thank you.
Do we have any additional requests to this aside from the property question here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions? I believe that this is an action by both the Plan Commission and the Village Board. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, uh... Yep, we're jumping around here. No, no.
That may be incorrect on the, this is just a board action to modify Chapter 36.
Okay, very good. We're sure of that?
Yes.
Okay. So from the Village Board, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I just have one quick question for Chris.
Please.
Just basically, at the end here, you're giving the board discretion to one way or another, you didn't weigh, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's not, okay.
It's, it's sort of allowing the opportunity to provide some flexibility to Plan Commission and Board.
All right, to move things along, I'll make the motion to accept the modification for 36.
All right.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right, there's a motion from Trustee Stigler and a second from Trustee Gurecki. Any further discussion from the Village Board? Hearing none, all those in favor of the modification to Chapter 36 for sidewalks, street sidewalks and other public places, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to two, with Trustee Kalinsky and German voting in opposition. All right, thank you. Now we will go back up to... Item eight, thank you. Discussion and possible action to, um, discussion and possible action on a rezone request for petitioner Tim Larson Shops at Sunset LLC for the property located at S-30W-24896 Sunset Drive, tax key W-A-K-T-1335942002, to rezone from B-3 General Business District with conditions to B-3 General Business District amending conditions to allow right turn exit only access onto Sunset Drive. And this will be a action by the Plan Commission and the Village Board. Are there questions from the Plan Commission or the Village Board on the rezone request? If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion if somebody would be so inclined to make one from the Planning Commission.
I'll move approval, approval of the zoning request.
Thank you. There's a motion from Commissioner Buchholz to approve the rezone request. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
And that was...
I, I would just clarify, there's, there are three conditions in the staff report. Did you, did the original motion include reference to those three conditions? Okay.
Thank you. And that was a second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion from the Plan Commission on the rezone request? Hearing none, there's a motion and a second for the rezone request. All those in favor, please indicate for the Plan Commission only. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry? Okay. That passes six to one with Commissioner Hecker's in opposition. Thank you. And I believe that will move us on to 10. Oh, I'm sorry, 8C, thank you very much. Moving on to the Village Board for the rezone request. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the motion to rezone.
Thank you. There's a motion from Trustee Gurecki. Is there a second? I will second that. Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
I believe that was three to two. Excuse me? Or it was just for the Village Board? Yep, no worries. With Trustees German and Kalinsky in opposition. Was that? Thank you. And moving on to item 10, discussion and possible action on a conditional use amendment request for petitioner Tim Larson Shops at Sunset LLC for the property located at S-30W-24896 Sunset Drive, tax key W-A-K-T-1335942002, the amendment to, excuse me, to amend the existing conditional use permit and site plan plan of operation for a drive-through lane associated with a quick-serve restaurant to allow right turn exit only access on Sunset Drive. This is again action by the Plan Commission and the Village Board.
Mr. President, if I, if I may?
Please.
So again, in my staff report, at the bottom of page five, our bottom of page four is the motion for the conditional use site plan and plan of operation. Essentially, everything with their previous approval would remain the same, except for the addition of the exit-only driveway. We would add the yield to pedestrian sign at the sidewalk requirement, replace any existing landscaping disturbed by the driveway in kind. And then condition three on my report, I'd like to modify it. It references materials presented to the Plan Commission and Board on October 9th, 2020. That was the previous go-around. It should be changed to June 10th, 2021.
Thank you.
Can I just ask another question or add something to this? You got the yield sign for the pedestrians, is it more appropriate to have a stop sign there?
It could be.
I mean, it's, you know, we got stop signs for every other access on there. If you got a stop sign, they're going to yield the pedestrians, so I think it would be more appropriate to have a stop sign.
I think you can have, I think you can have either, really. It's, it's a driveway. I don't think the Culvers Drive, exit driveway has a, has a stop sign per se, but if you want to add a stop sign, I'd, I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
I have some other comments in my site plan plan of operation letter, too. There's seven, seven of them. They're all kind of engineering-related, but one is providing an updated grading plan to depict and show the proposed driveway. The existing sidewalk through the driveway should be removed and replaced with six-inch concrete sidewalk to accommodate traffic loadings of the driveway. One-way pavement marking arrows should be provided at both ends of the driveway. A right turn only and no left turn signs must be added to the driveway to direct traffic west on Sunset. Dimensions of the driveway width at the curb opening and at the street side of the sidewalk should be added. Driveway details, including a cross-section, should be added to the plan. The driveway apron should be concrete. And then the hydrant, the hydrant issue, there appears to be a, a conflict with the fire hydrant that they're, they're aware of. And they'll need to get approvals from the City of Waukesha to relocate that hydrant as necessary.
On the right turn only sign that has a statute or something that makes it legal, legally enforceable for police officer to ticket somebody if they decide to make a left turn from there, other than just saying right turn only? You usually have to have some kind of statute there to make it legally enforceable.
I guess I'm not aware of that. If it's a regulatory sign, I think it's enforceable. It's in the public right of way, so...
Okay.
The Villages may need an ordinance. We have to check our ordinance.
Yeah.
That's a different, that's a different, that's a different issue than whether it's enforceable or not. It's enforceable. We, we, most ordinances read that we have official traffic map, and if the, if the proper procedure to place it on the official traffic map is done, then the police can enforce it.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the Plan Commission or the Village Board on the conditional use amendment?
Sean, I'd like you to look at the green space or the landscape plan, also for points, what is going to be taken out and whatnot.
For, for green space, to, to make sure that it's, that they have enough green space for the site? Sure.
Is that a friendly amendment that, subject to the planner confirming that the green space requirements are met? Or do you want to make that as a motion, or?
Well, we don't have a motion as of yet.
Yeah, there's no motion.
Right, no motion yet, just discussing conditions or possible conditions. Sure, I, I certainly can do that. I know B-3 in general, the B-3 district is very lenient in terms of green space requirements, but I'll check the special, because this is a special conditional use district. I'll, I'll make sure that whatever's required there is...
Because additional parking also in the rear, is there anything going to be lost back there?
They, they obviously did. See if you can see, it's, you know, it's, it's installed back there. And that, that was already approved, but you're right, they did, they did lose some as part of that as well. So I will, I'll verify.
Any other questions, or is there a motion from the Plan Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use amendment with the staff modifications of the planner and engineer comments.
Thank you. There's a motion from Commissioner White. Is there a second?
I'll second.
From Commissioner Webb. Any further discussion? For the Plan Commission, a motion and a second from Commissioners White and Webb.
I do have one question for you. Sean, based on the change to the conditions, do we need the applicant to come up and indicate whether the modifications of the conditions are acceptable?
I think we should. I think whatever conditions are, are discussed, they should, they should agree to them.
All right, let's have them come up and we'll run through them, make sure that they understand them and don't have any questions.
Everybody understands that's because of the new law. We're supposed to stick with the requirements and the conditions. We can add the additional conditions if the, you know, but we need to have acquiescence. We have objections or problems with the wording. Sean, you want to comment on that?
I would just say that we, you know, we can add whatever conditions we think are reasonable, but any conditions we add have to be backed up by substantial evidence as to why we would add that condition, unless the petitioner would agree to it. If they, if they'd agreed to it, then it's not an issue, but if they would, they would be opposed, then we, we need to provide some evidence as to why we're adding that condition.
So do you want to just run through them and...
Sure, so what I have is, so the conditions in my staff report, the conditions in Engineer Gennelli's staff report, the...
I want to stop there and ask you if he's reviewed those.
Sounds good.
If you could, Mr. President.
Yep, so have you reviewed the planner and the engineers' staff reports and the conditions in there?
As presented, yes.
Okay, and then we added, Sean?
Then we added to, to verify that any green space requirements per the, per the zoning are, are being met with the addition of the parking in the back and the new driveway up front. Replace any landscaping disturbed by the, by the driveway in kind on the site along the frontage. And then we have a sign to be added to the exit-only drive prior to the sidewalk. Have we decided if that's a yield sign or a stop sign? I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
There's no signs anywhere else and nobody seems to be getting run over, but I don't have a strong preference either way.
We would, we would agree to either one. We would certainly do the, we intend to do the, the yield sign for pedestrians. We intend to do that. If you feel more comfortable with the stop sign, we're, we're not opposed to that.
I would prefer a stop sign. I don't think it's going to matter too much, but I guess people are going to want a yield sign now. They're not even going to put a stop sign there. I'm more concerned that we do a berm there, you're going to be cutting through the berm, right?
Right.
So you're going to have a nice, like, thing going on here with the berm.
I have no problem with that.
So a stop sign at the, at the sidewalk?
Yes, right.
And for the record, Brandon, please make sure you include the minutes the engineer has confirmed, confirmed that either one would be... We have to follow the uniform traffic sign regulations, and so I always like to make sure that that's in, that the engineer has confirmed that that's doable.
Okay.
So my concern here is it's not a two-way street, it's a one-way street.
It's, it's just a one-way quick exit. It's not a two-way road where it's more visible than, than, than the two-way, like your main entrance here now, there's, that's quite visible to the traffic. You're having a single lane, basically, exit coming out there, and I think that's, the visibility there is a little bit limited. So I kind of think it'd be safer to have a stop sign there. I know you're saying that nobody gets hit at the other intersections, but I think this one's a little different than the normal intersection, so that's my concern.
Was that the end of the, of the conditions? Sean and/or Chris? Yeah, that's... And you're done with your conditions? Okay. All right, so there is a motion to approve the conditional use amendment. Hearing no further discussion from the Plan Commission, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six to one with Commissioner Hecker's in opposition. Thank you. And on to the Village Board for the same issue, amendment to the conditional use. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the amendment as written.
There's a motion from Trustee Gurecki. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Village Board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And that passes three to two with Trustee Kalinsky and German in opposition. Thank you very much. I think that puts that topic to bed. Moving on to item 12, is that correct? All right, we should be back in chronological order here now. Item 12. Hearing number three, notice is given that a joint public hearing involving the Village of Waukesha Plan Commission and the Village, and the Waukesha Village Board will be held on Thursday, June 10th, 2021. Beginning at 6:30 PM with the Wauke, at the Waukesha Village Hall located at W-250 S-3567 Center Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin. To hear a conditional use request for petitioner Barbara Block. For the property located at Lot 3, CSM 11986 River Road, tax key WAKT 1411996021. For the purpose of a conditional use permit for a residential planned unit development. Sean, do you have introductory comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So the, the property here on, on River Road is a part of a fairly recent CSM. It was a three lot CSM. The properties are all zoned A1 ag. Let me go to the overview here. So it's basically this lot, this lot, and this lot were recent CSM. Ag, the ag district in the Village of Waukesha requires a minimum parcel size of 20 acres. And so the parcel to the south is 20, just over 20 acres. This parcel is 35 acres. They're not proposing a rezoning. They're proposing to develop it under the current A1 zoning as a condominium residential PUD. To develop four single-family homes on individual units. They're not seeking, the, the PUD conditional use in the code allows for bonus density based on how much open space you, you conserve. They're not looking for a bonus density here. The current comprehensive plan for the, for the parcel and the parcel to the south is suburban density residential one. What they're proposing does fall within that, that, that range. The units that are being proposed, let me just go to the, the concept plan here. So this is the site. This is what's being proposed. It's a private road that comes in. And then there's four lot, four units. You know, one, two, three, unit three goes back further into the property and then unit four. Unit one, the home on unit one is currently under construction. That was petition for zoning and a building permit, and so that was approved and that's under construction now. And then after that happened, then the submittal for this conditional use PUD was, was submitted. So it still works with the overall development. Because they're not actually doing a land division here, because it's just a condominium development, they're not actually dividing land. And so our, they're not required to do a certified survey map or a subdivision plat. They will be required to do a condominium plat. And that's going to be coming later on. So all we really have tonight is sort of an introduction to the topic. Originally, they wanted to come in for conceptual review only, to talk about this in concept form. But because it is a conditional use, it's required to be, all testimony is required to be considered as part of the public hearing. And so. Even, even, so they will be back. So there won't be any action taken on this item tonight. It's, you know, likely to be adjourned to a later date till the rest of the information is, is submitted. But this at least give them some feedback going forward and they can tweak it and come back. So they're not, you know, I haven't seen anything, the engineer hasn't seen much beyond this concept plan. I'll just quickly go into some of the, some of the features here. I mentioned the zoning district. It is zoned A1. A lot of it is under shoreline zoning, sort of the, the whole back half or the north half of the property is shoreline zoning A1. County A1 zoning requires three acre minimum lot size for, for A1. We require a minimum 20 acres. The PUD wipes all that out. And we are in process of developing our own shoreline zoning. So in the next couple of months, that will override the county's zoning. In terms of the district and the PUD, as I mentioned, a condo PUD, a residential PUD is allowed in the, in the A1 zoning district. And there's no minimum lot size. The lot size is flexible. The PUD allows the flexibility for you to consider. And density is basically based on the amount of open space that's being preserved. No matter what, when you do a PUD, you have to preserve at least 20% open space to even get in the door. And so they're preserving much more than that, but it's essentially a lot of wetland and flood plain and environmental corridor. And so you can only count 20% of the wetland area, C1 zone land, for instance, as, as part of this. And so they're, they're just over the threshold for the village. I think they have 7.85 acres that can be counted in total, even though they're actually preserving a lot. But because you can only count 20% of wetlands, essentially they're preserving 22.4% open space. They need 20 to get in the door for a PUD. They're not asking for any bonus density. And so it gets, it gets them into consideration. The counties though, because there's still county shoreline zoning and we're still enforcing county shoreline zoning until we have our own. The county requires a minimum of 40% open space, no matter what, for any PUD. And so they don't meet that right now. And so we couldn't approve it in its current form until our shoreline zoning is in place. So this is going to have to sort of mirror our shoreline zoning process. So just be aware of that. There are specific provisions for, for, for PUDs, for us, for residential PUDs. Again, the, the whole purpose is to provide flexibility in design and make way for changes in building technology, new demands in the housing market, preserve open space, et cetera. As I mentioned, there's no minimum lot size, offset, setback, open space required, except as, as required for the density. All sanitary has to be approved by the county health department. The proposed development shall not be contrary to the general welfare or economic balance of the community. And the benefits and amenities that result in development justify the variation from the normal requirements of the district. All other requirements of the PUD have to be met. I talked about the, the requirements for the open space. Again, they do meet that for the, for the village. They don't yet meet, they don't meet that for the county, but that won't be an issue for, forever. Common open, open space has to be clearly delineated as an outlaw or easement. As I mentioned, only 20% of C1 zone land, which is the wetland, can be, can be counted. They so far have met that. There has to be a guarantee for the permanent retention of open space through either private easement, public dedication. We haven't talked about that. They do have areas one and two designated. We haven't seen the condominium documents yet. But we would require that those documents address the ownership of the open space and the, and the long-term maintenance, which is also a requirement. In addition, they would be submitting a land stewardship plan that would discuss how the open space would be maintained long-term. And that's really it for the, for the conditions, for the specific conditions in the conditional use section. We do have some general conditional use considerations as well. That's basically that the plan commission and board need to review the site, the existing and proposed structures, architectural plans, neighboring uses, parking areas, driveway locations. Highway access, traffic generation and circulation, drainage, sewage and water systems, proposed operation, and other factors as appropriate when considering a conditional use permit. So essentially, it's, it's wide open what you can consider and what you should consider for reviewing conditional use. I just have a couple of quick comments related to the actual layout of the development, and then Chris may have a couple as well. What, we try to preserve as much of the environmental corridor and the wetlands as part of open space as possible when we look at subdivision developments or condo developments. And they do almost all of it as in, you know, as in area two, for instance, being preserved. But there's a couple of small areas which you can see in the overhead. The, the environmental corridor does kind of overlap some of the units a little bit there. More so on lot, I'm sorry, on unit three. And that's kind of unavoidable since it comes back to the back of the property. But I would at least expect some of these little slivers of environmental corridor to be outside of the units as much as possible. Stormwater management, again, and this is a county review item. They are proposing a, a couple of basins in areas one and two near the entrance on River Road. And then there's a drainage swale for water quality before it gets back to the wetland back here between units three and four. So again, I haven't seen any preliminary comments from Waukesha County yet, but that's something that we're going to require before this is approved. Circulation and access. The, the certified survey map for these couple of lots on the east side of River Road and also on the west have designated locations for access because it is a county highway. They are using the designated access location. We would request that, obviously, Waukesha County would review the access to determine if there's any improvements required at county, county road I. In terms of architecture, the petitioner has stated that they're looking for a modern farmhouse theme. There'd be black roofing. The outbuildings would be limited to red and white siding with black roofing. And then we would expect to see those requirements represented in the condo docs when those are put forward. No specific landscaping is proposed yet. They have a couple of berms out front that there will be some landscaping. We'd expect to see a landscape plan come forward as well. No signage, no, no proposed signage has come forward yet for the, for the entrance as well. So to wrap things up for me, going forward, we'd expect to see a landscape plan for common areas, land stewardship plan for maintenance and management of the common areas. The condo plat, condo documents, the site civil engineering plan, the details for that, and then stormwater management plan and also comments from Waukesha County on that. Chris, do you have anything to?
I do, thanks Sean. I just have five comments, and actually you touched on a, a couple of them already. First one being, the cul-de-sac is shown as a private road, which we have no problem with. But we do suggest that the road be constructed to the village standard cross-section and dimensions. We recommend that the condominium plat and covenants and restrictions identify the road as private and being maintained by the, by the lot owners or condominium owners. As Sean mentioned, storm waters by Waukesha County, so copies of the approvals must be provided to the village. Again, the intersection, location and design should be approved by Waukesha County and copies of approvals provided to the village. Condo plat submitted to the village. I note too that the, the village standard road right-of-way and right-of-way for cul-de-sacs are both 66 feet. And it must be no, I, I note that the right-of-way widths, the right-of-way I use in quote, air quotes, because it's not a, a public road. That are being proposed and shown on the, on the concept plan are substandard at 50 and 55 feet. However, given the road is private, we believe that the proposed widths being less than village standard further identify the road as being private. So we have no, no issues there.
All right. Is that it gentlemen? Very good.
So let me just explain, under the new law, this is the intro of a conditional use. The purpose for this presentation is to put the petitioner, as well as any neighbors, on notice that these are the requirements and the conditions that must be satisfied in order for the conditional use, and that's by substantial evidence. And, and we will make the same comments, you know, prior to the public hearing next time. We also allow for very limited, they went into detail as to what the property owner is already going to have to bring in as part of their presentation at the public hearing. So you don't need to worry if you're concerned about certain aspects of those, they've already been put on notice. But if there's anything else, they're not going to come up, they're not going to do a presentation, that's part of the public hearing. But if you're something specific that you're concerned about, and like, like Bob did with the stop sign at the last one. You'd say, when you come in for the public hearing, we expect substantial evidence on blank. So if there's something in your head that you want to make sure, and that's so we don't have to adjourn and have them come back to prepare for your issue. If there's something in your head right now, and there may not be, and I'm not suggesting there will. It's a very thorough report by the planner and the engineer as to what the petitioner has to come back with at the public hearing. But if there is something, this is the opportunity for you to say, when you come back, make sure you deal with blank. Does that make sense?
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'm a little confused because this is, is a public hearing according to the agenda.
It is a public hearing.
So I'm a little confused with what the attorney just said when they come back for the public hearing. We're already in it.
We are, but we don't expect that the public hearing will be closed this evening.
Okay.
It will be adjourned. And now they know as part of the ongoing public hearing, which I'm assuming will be adjourned to the first or to the plan commission meeting in July. That, what they need to come back with. In addition, the public has the opportunity to speak. If it wasn't for a public hearing, they wouldn't have that opportunity. And if the neighbors and the public have specific concerns, then they can also come back and be prepared to address those.
And that's my error. I, I thought this was the introduction. I didn't know what we were going to do.
No, we, we, I mean, we, we talked about this before and we said it had to be a public hearing because there, you know, there may be testimony tonight and.
Right.
There's no way to do it without this. So we, we knew all along we would adjourn this because it wasn't. They wanted some preliminary feedback before going further. We, we had to do it through the public hearing.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
But if there is public here, we can hear from you.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's.
Do you want them to do the dog and pony show this?
Well, I, I'm not sure what they're prepared to do tonight, but we can certainly invite the applicant up to, to add any additional information to what.
Is the applicant here? Okay. Would you like to come up? And if you could just each start by introducing yourselves.
I'm Amy Block.
And your address, please.
Oh, well, we both live at N. 3927 Prairie Ridge Lane in Helenville.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I'm Barbara Block. I'm the co-owner. Amy and I own the property.
And your same address?
At the same address, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening everyone. Josh Pedelko, Trio Engineering.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Anything that you'd like to add at this time?
No, I think at this point Sean represented what we're planning and working on. And we're excited about moving back into Waukesha. We live out in Jefferson County now. And we were looking for a rural environment. And my first choice in looking for a property was the town of Waukesha, which is now the village. So we're real excited about establishing our homes. In fact, well, we're builders also. So we're building the first house that we plan on living in for two years. Then we will eventually, Amy and I will eventually build on lot three and have a hobby farm. And then my youngest daughter will have a home on lot four. Lot two, it, it may, well, they're really not lots. So.
No, I understand.
That, that division may or may not remain. We may build a house there to sell. So there may be two that are eventually sold and two that we're going to maintain to live in.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not looking to be land developers per se, or strictly builders, strictly spec builders, you know, investing kind of thing, so.
Okay, thank you. Sir, anything?
No, I think the, the intent with this layout really is to follow a, a larger zoning district. And, but we, with this, we can have a condominium community that's a little tightly, more tighter controlled. You know, we like the uses in the A1. The unit lines or lot lines that are laid out here and kind of notably in the back lots one, two, and three. Sean had mentioned the PEC slivers. That's actually not the edge of the farm field. The PEC is delineated as the outer edge of the drip line of the trees. So our lot line more follows the edge of the farm field there today. So pulling that in may seem a little awkward eventually to the users because their lot ends before the woods because there's a drip line hanging over, so. Interested in your feedback on if we should adjust or not.
Yeah, here, I would just comment here, and Josh say that, I guess I don't feel strongly about it, knowing that it's not, you know, that is the existing field and it's not. There's nothing there necessarily being preserved by having the lot.
There isn't.
To, to the edge.
Okay.
One other comment I, I forgot to address and I want to make. The wetland that's on the property was delineated back in 2012, and then I think it was adjusted in 2013. And that showed, that well and showed up on the certified survey map and the environmental corridor showed up on the certified survey map. And the CSM itself has restrictions for what you can and can't do in the wetlands and in corridors, just, you know, the typical standard restrictions. But normally, this isn't a land division necessarily, so it doesn't follow all the procedures. It, it follows the same procedures as a land division, but it doesn't follow the same. It, it follows the same procedures as a land division, but it doesn't follow the same requirements as a land division. And so normally we require a, a wetland delineation to be done within five years. Um, however, the wetland is pretty well contained within Area Two. It's nowhere near any, any close to any structure that would be proposed on the properties, and so, I guess I'm asking the Plan Commission and Board's opinion if that wetland would need to be redelineated. It's not required by the ordinance, I'm not proposing, I'm not saying it necessarily needs to be, but some acknowledgement that they don't have to redelineate the wetland as part of the project would be helpful as well.
Alright, well, let's give the public an opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you can start with your name and address, please.
Uh, Bill Godfrey, South Fifty-three, West Two-Six, Four-Four-Five, Foxville Court.
Thank you.
And, uh, there's a discrepancy in the survey, and, uh, Janie Myers and myself would like to have, would get our survey done. I've been out there forty-four years, and, uh, we believe in the stakes that were on there. And then one of the other concerns is a water runoff. And, uh, we'd like to see how they're gonna handle that.
Okay.
That's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll make sure we get those addressed. We'll take a couple of people from the public, and if there's a couple of group questions, then we'll have them address them. Good evening.
Good evening, Stuart Buchholz, uh, South Five-Two, West Two-Six, Four-Three-Five, Foxville Court. Again, our considerate, our real concerns are the water problem. Um, in the previous year, since they started developing Fox Lake Village to the north of us, it's pushing all the water, because they're doing a lot of filling and everything, it's pushing all the water south, which was the original path the water should have took, taken out to the Vernon Marsh. And now they're proposing to build there, and it's been brought to my attention that the water table's pretty high there. That's why they, the existing house that they're building there is up out of the ground by about eight feet. Another concern I have is the fill that they're bringing in for that house. Is there a limit to how much fill they can put on a piece of property? Because that fill is pushing up the water table also. So everything's gonna, where's everything gonna go? It's gotta go downhill. So it's either gonna go to the north, or it's gotta go to the east. And if it goes to the north, you're gonna flood out Janie, and you're gonna flood out that whole corner. And another problem I have is whose responsibility would it be? Because there is supposed to be a drainage that goes across River Road down to the Fox River. And that's part of the reason why that's flooding. I mean, we're getting more and more, this is an exceptional year, I mean, it's, it's been dry this year, we've had a record dry year. But when there's water, we get a year with rain. We've had water across the driveway already, across Foxville Court. Um, and this area here is just flooding out more and more every year because of all the, the rest of the construction going on, with everybody raising the ground up because the water table's so high.
Okay.
That, that's another concern we got. And the other thing was, is yes, um, it's been brought to my attention, and I kind of looked at it myself, that when they did the survey for the property, the existing lot stakes are there, and the new lot stakes are ten, ten to twelve feet off of them. Their, their, Janie and Bill are losing like ten, ten more feet to twelve feet of their property. So, we want to take and get our own survey and have it resurveyed, and, and make sure that's proper, because the existing stakes are there, so I can't believe they would've moved in how many years. It, it's been, I've been brought to my attention also that there used to be a, a actual swell or water right away that went, went back to the Vernon Marsh, it went to the east and it went to the south, where the water was supposed to run. And somewhere along the line, I don't know if it got filled in by the farmer or whatever happened with that, but that's another reason we're filling up with water in between there. So, the flooding is a big issue for us, and then again, the, the lot line issue.
Thank you. Uh, do one of you two gentlemen want to talk about stormwater runoff, or would you like the petitioner to address that? And it certainly doesn't need to be done this evening, as we know we're not gonna close the public hearing, so these are issues that we could address at the next, at the, uh, at the-
Yeah, I think, I think we'll work with the county to make sure that these concerns are addressed satisfactorily, yeah.
And did you, did the petitioner want to address any survey questions this evening, or is that something that you'd like to come back with?
Well, I guess I talked to-
If you could come up to the mic ma'am. If you'd like to grab a chair to be up closer, that'd be fine also. We put this out on, on YouTube, and if you're not by the mic, then no one can hear what you're saying.
Okay, um-
Thank you.
Ian, before I purchased the property, I wrote a letter to all the, the neighboring people.
Okay.
Um, I've met with Jane, and I met with Bill-
Ma'am, just address the town board, please, with the village board, just address the village board.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And the third man, um, I'm not sure where he lives, is he with Bill?
Uh, he's on Foxville Court.
Okay, well, I haven't met him, okay. Um, in, in the time that I was preparing to close on this property, I had my surveyor who does my stakeout surveys, I wanted the perimeter staked, because I realized that they've been there thirty, forty years. And actually, well, anyways, we met with Jane, mainly we met Jane and Tom during the winter, and, um, there's an overlap, simple as that. And it's hard to explain, um, Jane's brother is actually a surveyor, and he had his theory about it all. I went, um, I notified the sellers fiduciary realty before I closed on the property on December thirty-first, and they said they would have Trio resurvey it, and they would, they would pay for that if I closed as planned, so I did. So Trio resurveyed it and put in these other stakes. And just like they said, the new stakes are ten feet into, especially Jane's land, that she's been using for forty years.
So do you have that survey report?
That's, well, what's funny is that my survey, and if you look at the aerial survey on the GIS in Waukesha County, um, at satellite view, it looks like, and Sean has it up right now, it looks correct, because the dimensions are supposed to follow the section line. So, well, I don't know, you, do you guys have that on? Okay, he has it on the screen. So it shows that they planted those trees years ago, and, uh, it looks like a normal lot that they were using for all these years. So now, when the resurvey came up, I've been out at that point and along this line, I haven't gone the north and south line, because it's thick into the trees. And I'm not really that, all that concerned about it, but especially Jane's property, this is a major impact. If my legal description, as far as dimensions of my property, and the new stakes are actually ten feet into there. So I've been over at her house a couple of times talking, and my point of view is I have no intention of claiming that land. I talked to fiduciary about quit claiming that over to her, which I believe they should have done before they closed with me.
Well, I, I understand, but my question was, is do you have a survey report from a certified serv, surveyor that shows all of this? Because that's what we're gonna, we're gonna need this resolved before we can-
Uh, well, okay, this is, it shows exactly what you see on the map. But in the field, it shows something else. There's an iron pipe that was done when Vale, Foxville Court was done forty years ago. And, and Jane's brother, and here again, this is his opinion or whatever, he, he claims that the surveying equipment wasn't as accurate as it is now, and that pipe does not meet the section line, and that's supposed to be the property line, the section line. So, how do I explain all that? I don't know. Like I said, you look on the aerial, it looks right. You go out in the field, there's a pipe here and a flag over here. And my dimensions on my CSM go to the flag, not to the pipe. And then there's a little variance on the north-south with Godfrey's, I, I don't even know how much. The main, the main issue is that line, uh, going east and west with Jane. And actually, the line goes all the way out across River Road into Tom's property, and you can see right here, when they did the CSMs, or actually, this is a P U B over here, they found that Tom's building was actually over the line that it was supposed to be. And so a number of years ago, they quit claimed him this odd piece. And Jane can attest to that, because she said she came to the meeting about that. So this discrepancy runs the whole way.
We, we don't need this all resolved tonight, but it's gonna have to be resolved.
I'm trying to resolve it.
Okay.
I talked to fiduciary, I had her out there. And, and to be honest with you, they kind of said, give her it all on your own.
Well, that, that, that's gonna be for you to take up with them.
Well, I know.
Did they put-
I don't really see it that way.
Did they put new pipes in the ground, or did they just flag it?
Okay, the, um, I don't know, Josh wants to get to this, now that we opened this up. The pipe in the ground is from the original survey of Jane's property, and all the ones that were done around Foxville. The pipe is here. The pipe is here, but the flag is up ten, ten-ish feet.
Okay, just-
Mike, to answer your question, they just stated they didn't put the pipes in there. Okay, I mean, they, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we didn't, they didn't put the pipes in there.
They just stated. Okay. But it is a concern that it's in the law.
Are the neighbors in agreement with a quick claim deed if you would chose to do that?
I, I told you that-
I mean, that's probably the fastest-
She's in agreement with that, and if I need to do it, if not, free too. But the whole thing is fiduciary, I believe knew about all this, and they didn't do it.
But that's on another issue, if you want to get this through as fast as possible, quick claim would probably be your fastest.
That's fine.
And just, just for the record, that, that lot line adjustment, that quick claim also does need to be approved by the Plan Commission and Board as well, so.
Well, it, it came up, now you all know, and, and I'm willing to fix it.
So, and that's great, it, because it's gonna have to be resolved, and we know that it won't be resolved this evening, and, but that's why we're starting this, this evening in anticipation that it won't complete, because it gives you time for when you come back, whatever your next public hearing will be, likely in July, that these issues can be resolved, because they have to be resolved before we can be, move forward.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Alright. Any other questions?
I have a question. Regarding, um, the runoff and the additional fill that's being, uh, the house is being set up higher, uh, septic and mound requirements, I know that's usually the county, um, have they changed a lot? Uh, will you be talking about that later in your report? How that impacts when you change the grade substantially like that, and where this is all going?
Yeah, that'll all be part of the stormwater management plan that they'll have to prepare and get approved by the county.
Oh, boy, that seems, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, um- Just, just to second to what Chris said, the county, I, I'm not sure if they started talking to the county yet, I, I assume that they have. We haven't seen anything, again, all stormwater management is, is overseen by the county. They, they approve all the plans and all the, the maintenance agreements as well, we obviously have input if we-
Have the rules changed a lot on mound systems? For a while there, they were really strict.
Oh, well, that, I mean, that's different than stormwater management, that's, that's another issue, they, and they approve all the sanitary systems as well. But, um, yeah, tho, those haven't changed recently.
Okay.
And in response to John Macy's comments, if we have one thing, and you'll probably hear this from me going forward, um, because I am in the real estate business, I see now with the cost of everything being so high, people are cutting back on landscaping and trees. And we've got whole subdivisions going in with an area tree, and, and that's not gonna be good for resale and, at, at any time, and it's certainly not good for soil erosion, et cetera. So I'm gonna suggest when they come in with a landscape plan that we can see if we can get some trees and something that will, uh, enhance the site and enhance the value of the site. Thank you.
I've got a question about the private road. How, what is the width of that again?
The road is twenty-four, but the right-of-way is fifty.
Is it, I mean, obviously Dan, we got a problem with player apparatus getting in and out of these small, private roads, correct?
Believe it or not, that was on my agenda for, for us to tackle someday down the road here, because we're starting to get a number of these, and this is the minimum requirement, it's twenty-four feet of pavement. Um, typical road structure though, in the village, has been the twenty-four foot of pavement with shoulder and then ditch on both sides. So when you count the gravel shoulder, that adds another six feet of width, eight feet of width to the road. The way they're doing it with a, with a one-foot curb on each side, you got a twenty-six foot wide road. It does become a problem, and we, we've had issues, uh, over on Arcadian Avenue twice, we've had issues over there where people park their car, because they only got a, they only got a twenty-foot long driveway, so they get one car in the, in the driveway, and the other one parks on the road. Um, you get a car parked on both sides of the road, you can't get through. That's, that's sixteen to eighteen feet of road taken up by two cars parking, and, and it doesn't leave you enough room to drive a car through, nothing to say about a fire truck or an ambulance. So we do have an issue, and, but, you know, by law, I mean, this, this meets the minimum requirement right now.
What's overall length of that road?
Um, I can do a quick calculation, I'm not, I'm not certain.
Sean and Chris, I can help out with both those. Uh, cul-de-sac length is nine hundred and seventy-five feet. Uh, the road section proposed is twenty-four feet of asphalt and a thirty-one inch or two-and-a-half foot wide mountable curb on both sides. Uh, the benefit to this type of section and the fifty-foot right-of-way is you have a grass terrace outside of that, uh, two-and-a-half foot curb. So really you have a very level area within that entire fifty feet. And then overall length from nine hundred and seventy-five feet.
So what I have on the list so far here is the survey discrepancy, uh, water runoff questions, uh, in particular for drainage across River Road, um, the high water table, what requirements there are for the amount of fill that can be added to a property, and then a landscape plan. Those are the issues that I've heard that need to be addressed.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. The only comment I'd like to make is that if, if this is gonna be on the agenda for the July meeting, we will need application materials and updated materials to review, um, you know, with, with enough advance, and so, um-
Well, it doesn't need to be, I mean, we can adjourn it to the August meeting.
No, I know, I'm, but maybe we should ask the applicant if they can, if they can meet the deadline, and basically, um, the meeting in July is-
The eighth?
The eighth, right.
It's early.
It is early.
Is the first is a Thursday?
Yeah, essentially in order to review these things, we're probably gonna need, um, I would say by the beginning, maybe the twenty-first to the twenty-second of June, to have enough time to review, to make the eighth meeting, right? To get, and then, and then the lead time for the Plan Commission packets and everything else.
So is that adequate, or would you be more interested in the August Plan Commission meeting? If you could come up, please.
Right now, I believe that's adequate time.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Sean, and, and the trustee corrected me correctly, did you expect that they would give some testimony tonight to address, uh, some substantial evidence on some of these requirements or conditions? I know we talked about it both ways, and so I, I don't want to put them off.
No, not, not necessarily, and I don't think they can, because most of their documents aren't in yet, right? We don't have all of things that sort of prove that they meet the, the evidence- We don't have all of the things that sort of prove that they meet the evidence required for a residential P D.
That was our discussion, I guess, that's why I didn't assume they were going to try to.
I, no, I thought they might introduce the project, but I don't think, you know, we'll know that they meet substantial evidence when they present the condo docs and the landscape plan and, you know, the land stewardship plan. All those things are required, and so, I think that that's better reserved for next time.
Mr. President, there's one more thing. I think the signage issue should have been on there also. I think we missed that, when you were going over the notes that we need signage issues if they're gonna assignage plan.
Okay.
Are you saying if they're proposing like an entrance sign? I don't know if they are or they aren't. But if they are, then they need to submit it for sure.
I'm gonna probably ask and look for some conditions put on how the road's maintained, especially in winter time. We've had issues over at Merrill Hills already in their planned unit development, where they're not even plowing some of the roads, and we'd had real issues. And with these curbs, these folks don't plow these private roads all the way out to the grass. They just don't. And they get, in the winter time, they get very narrow quickly.
So, you'll be looking for a maintenance plan?
Yeah, that's, I was gonna try to summarize that. You're looking for, I was gonna say winter maintenance plan, but just an overall road maintenance plan.
Could it be part of the condominium documents that describe who's responsibility, you know, the unit owner's responsibility and how that road is maintained and plowed?
Well, and specifically, things like, you know, plowed curb-to-curb.
No, right, but that could be found in the condo docs? Or are you looking for a separate recordable agreement that is outside of the condo docs? I just don't know.
I'm not sure what the legal difference would be.
So, either, obviously, the condominium docs will talk about the unit owners and their maintenance, their responsibility for the private road. The question is, do the things like the snow plowing and how much is plowed, does that belong in the condo docs, or should we try to get a separate maintenance agreement, something different that gets recorded separately? I don't necessarily have an opinion, but I'd like to give them, you know, proper direction.
I guess a little bit has to do with how does this get enforced? You know, what authority does this get enforced after? If it's not met, you know, if the plan's not met, if the access isn't as wide as it should be, or it's not open like it should be, how does it get enforced and who's gonna do that? Right now, I can tell you, over at Merrill Hills, this last winter, nothing was enforced. They're in their building. I said if we'd had to go in there for an emergency, there could've been contractors in there that get hurt, and we'd have had a hike in there, because you couldn't get in.
Well, how do the contractors get in and out?
Their four-wheel-drive truck.
I have one community who absolutely refuses to have private roads for that reason, because the problems are just more than they want to deal with. And everybody, at some point in the history of the private road, will come back and ask for it to be a public road, on the argument that they pay the same taxes. So, I, but that's a policy decision, if you want to allow. We have other communities that they don't want anything but private roads. But there's nothing we can do, it's private.
Oh, I think that's part of, I think our ordinance says that even the private road right-of-way is supposed to be 66-foot just for that reason. Because if now, if this wanted to be a private, a public road, it couldn't be, it's substandard.
And that was a trick city of Waukesha, and I don't mean that in a negative way. They required a lot of the condominium units to be less than 66 feet, so they could never, you know, that was one of the arguments, why you could never dedicate them to the city, because, so that's, you know, there are pros and cons for having less than the 66 feet, because then it can never become private, you know?
Public, never become public.
Since this is a condominium project, can we not require, as part of their rules and regs, that all this be addressed with responsible parties and whatever?
We can, but the condominium documents are private documents. It's a private road, private development. So, it says what it says, and they're supposed to abide by it, but those aren't our laws, those are their laws.
Commissioner, we would never recommend that it be written, and if they don't do it, the town, the village will, because then they won't do it, you know? So, there's no good, I believe the commissioner, the chief's position is there's no good fallback if they don't do it. I mean, what do we do, write tickets, you know? Give them a ticket for not plowing their private road? That's not, you know, it's their problem. And it's a serious safety problem. I'm not saying it's not, chief. I sat in a meeting the other night, and I said, we're gonna be looking at a private road, and that administrator said, we just, you know, they have one, and it's nothing but, you know, it's a senior complex, and every year, they get a request to take it over. And they say, no. This is what you bought.
Well, then, I would hear that we would want the road maintenance plan to be outside of the condo docs, because we don't have any ability to do anything with condo docs, because they're a private agreement.
We don't have anything to do with it if it's a deed restriction, generally. I mean, what would we do? As I said, what would you do? You have two options, ticket them or go and plow it. Well, they'll want you to go plow it, they'll want you to-
Well, not if I send them a bill.
Maybe they will, maybe they will. They'll say, we prefer to, we shouldn't be having higher, pardon? These are the issues, but that's, you know, this is what they're proposing, and this is the discussion you have to have, so they know how, that you expect that they're gonna address this.
Yeah, I don't think we should be getting in the snow plowing business, because that can, that'll just snowball. I, no pun intended, but, you know, everybody's gonna want their driveway plowed after that point, when they find that out, it's like, like Mr. White said, it'll turn into a-
Well, but, this isn't a driveway. We already are in the streets.
Technically, it's only three houses gonna be back, it's a driveway.
I have another question. I know when fiduciary brought this in as a residential development, the county only was allowing them one entrance into it. Now, all of a sudden, we have three properties, and we could potentially have three roads coming out?
Yeah, each of those lots on the certified survey have one access point. There's no restrictions on what can come off that access point, that's just where it's limited. So, yeah, the property directly south could develop and have a road as well.
That's an excellent point, and you might want to put on the list for them. Fiduciary had a plan for the potential redevelopment of these with cul-de-sacs, but they were all talked about in public at the time. I'm glad to see Commissioner White shaking his head, because they said, we're not going to do this development any further, but we're making these large lots for the potentiality that if someone wants to subdivide them, they can. And I think they actually, Mr. White, help me out, they actually showed us a plan at that time of how these lots could be re-divided with public cul-de-sacs. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
So, we might want to have them go back and find that and bring that information in, just so that it would be of assistance. But it was all, I think, chief, public. I don't think you were on at that time, but that was all, they were all public. Now, that's not to say they can't ask for the private, you know, that's what they're asking for, and again, that's your policy decision. But there were sketches submitted, do you remember that?
No, that may have been before my time.
Chris, do you remember him? So, that's an excellent point, so they should bring that research in. Mr. White, is it?
Yeah, I have another comment. In fact, on Lot 3-
We can just hold on that, because I wanna be able to give them specific direction. I mean, I don't know that we've given them direction about what they should bring in. What are we asking them to bring in?
I personally think that it would be helpful for them to bring in the, what was submitted to the Plan Commission by fiduciary at the time for the potential redevelopment of these lots.
Okay. Is that understood by the petitioner?
It's understood. I would just, I think, ask the village staff to try to find what was submitted, just to make sure we have consistency, because this isn't the prior developer, it's a different landowner, who may not have access to all the plans or prior historic info.
It's all public documents.
Okay.
That was what he was pointing out.
So, I'll go through the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I'll work with Sean.
Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner White.
Yeah, in fact, even on Lot 3, I think at one time, they were proposing a road to go through that lowland where it kinda gets, kinda gets narrower, back where it opens up, that, I believe at one time, they weren't gonna even allow anybody to cross that section. And with a road, obviously, right now, there's discombi open lands, so it's not gonna be an issue. But I do have another comment on that lot line argument or disagreement, I guess. Even the road on the other side of Sales Row with that 10-foot, where they did a jog across where that barn or his shed was, I recall that being an issue, discrepancy of the lot line back then, when they moved that 10-foot back then, where that line wasn't correct back then, when they realized his lot, his shed was on the wrong property. And that's why they moved that lot line, that little jog there.
Okay. Any other input from the public? And from the Plan Commission? Or the Village Board? And at this point, I will adjourn this public hearing until July 8th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Thank you. I need to get back to my agenda here. I have it here. So, that is item number 12. There's no action to take on item number 13, is that correct? Which is the discussion of possible action, the conditional use?
Correct.
Okay. Moving on to 14, discussion of possible action of the site plan, plan of operation amendment request. For petitioner Kurt Bushman, agent on behalf of Blifford Waukesha Holdings LLC, owner for the property located at S-30W-24604 Sunset Drive, tax key W-A-K-T-1335988, to remove two existing storage buildings totaling approximately 7,700 square feet, and to construct a 96-by-100-foot, 9,600-square-foot storage building in the same general location. This will be action by the Plan Commission and the Village Board. Planner Malarkey.
Mr. President, I'd like to recuse myself on this one, if I could, please.
Thank you. And he would be stepping down at 8:33. All right, Planner Malarkey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, on the overhead up here, you can see Blifford Lumber here on Sunset Drive, just west of the railroad tracks. The two buildings that they're talking about removing are the building with the red roof and the one right behind it, and then putting up a new, a new building, and it's basically in its place. It's turned a little bit, I can show you on the site plan. So, that was the red building, that was the other one. And so, here's a new building, slightly larger, it's turned, cocked a little bit. And so, that's essentially the gist of what's being proposed. It meets, in terms of setback requirements, it meets those requirements. The building itself is an accessory building. Normally, the accessory buildings are limited to 18 feet in height, but we do allow increases in height up to 10 additional feet, provided there's setback two feet for each additional foot in height. And so, they also meet that requirement as well. The, nothing is changing in terms of the plan of operation or the overall plan of operation for the business, except that these storage buildings are being replaced by the new ones. Architecture, let me go to the... Essentially, we require for storage buildings or industrial buildings that 50% of the facade visible from the road is comprised of decorative masonry, or glass, or some other material that's approved by the Plan Commission and Board. And so, it's essentially a metal building that's being proposed. The building itself is obscured a little bit, based on a large propane tank and the parking lot that's out there, but you can see it from sunset. The petitioner has noted, he wanted to discuss with the Plan Commission and Board the materials of the project. He has stated that he'd be willing to put a, no problem putting like a wainscoting band across the bottom of the building to match, something that would match the building that's out front, the main building. Or would also be in favor of putting up a wall, a landscape wall, that would sort of be in front of the propane tank and behind the parking, that would screen the yard in the back. And so, it would have a gate that would be, you know, you'd be able to see through the gate, but it would screen some of the building and the propane tank as well. So, it's open for discussion. I know we've been around the block a few times in the materials on buildings, but there is some leeway there in terms of what the Plan Commission approves for appropriate finished materials. The other thing about the building is it does have an overhead door that faces sunset. Overhead doors are also prohibited unless it would be waived from the Plan Commission and the Board for unique circumstances. The petitioner has basically stated that the overhead door is required in that location, based on the flow of traffic coming through the gate and then into the building. As it stands now, the existing building out there does have, how many is it? I think it's two or three overhead doors now. So, this would be fewer overhead doors, but still, you know, technically, it does not conform with our ordinance. Landscaping, the site itself now is all basically impervious surface, these buildings and asphalt. This new building isn't replacing any green space, it's only replacing impervious surface. And so, the way it operates now, in order to get additional landscaping, you'd have to tear up some asphalt and put some in. So, technically, new buildings do require landscaping around the foundation, they're not putting any in, so that's something for the Plan Commission to consider as well. No new signage is proposed, and then, in terms of stormwater management, again, they're not proposing any new impervious area, it's already existing, but Waukesha County will require erosion control. Chris, do you have comments on this?
I do not, actually.
All right, thanks.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Is there somebody here from the petitioner?
I'm on here, this is Tom Kurt Burger, I'm the general manager there.
Thank you.
Address is-
Could just step on up to the mic.
Okay, my address is West 2102 Beulah Heights Road, East Drive.
Thank you.
And Kurt?
Kurt Bushman, I live at West 230 South 4353 Milky Way Road.
Excellent, thank you. Did you have, did you have-
I'm the builder.
I'm sorry?
I'm the general contractor for the building.
Oh, got it, okay. Did you gentlemen have anything else to add?
Well, just, you know, obviously, we want to, we located the building where it is, so that when we take down the two buildings, we can stay in business and not take down a lot more to do something different. The other thing is, is we-
If you could just step a little closer to the mic, please.
We're trying to have this building be where most of the retail business or pickup business goes into that one building, and then is able to exit the yard, where now the materials are spread amongst the yard, and they're making multiple stops, and we have lots of semis coming in and out of that place. And so, it'll be definitely a safety thing that'll help with this building. So, that's why the flow, like you said, if you look at the existing building, it's a real narrow place that the semis go through, and the buildings get hit all the time. And so, now it'll be setback, they'll have a lot better path to go in. And then, as far as the screening, like I say, if you want us to do a screening up against the front to help block, I guess you could still see it on an angle, you know, coming past the other side of the tracks. But like I say, we got a propane tank in front, all the employee parks in that parking lot, so the amount of the building that you're gonna see from the street is just the upper level of it.
Just let-
I know one other thing that Sean didn't touch on, and I'll just point that out, is one of your requirements is a 212 pitch roof, if it's not flat. The company that we are looking to buy it from, you know, drew it as a 112 pitch, and with the way the building sits on that lot, if we would move it to a 212 pitch, we'd have to pull it off the lot, and to pull it off the lot then gets into our existing driveway.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's on my staff report, but I did not mention that, thanks.
Okay. Questions from the Plan Commission or the Village Board?
So, I just, for consideration, I brought up the street view from Google Maps, and you can see, this is the existing building that's visible from the road now, it's got three over- this is the existing building that's visible from the road now. It's got three overhead doors. It's partially obscured by the by the parking and the propane tank back there. But certainly, it certainly is visible from the roadway. And then the new building will be will be taller as well, about twice as tall as this one.
Yeah, the new building is on an angle, so it'll be a little different look too instead of being square to the road.
That's that's correct.
Yeah, plus it's another whatever distance back from the existing building.
So anybody from the Plan Commission or the Village Board have thoughts about the facade and/or the request to, can you go back to that?
I would be more in tune for some type of planter out by the fence.
Can you go back to that? So you would like to see a fence along there?
Some kind of a, some kind of a garden wall or a decorative wall here and then the gate.
Rather than worrying about the building behind, in the yard.
Here's the building.
So I guess if you go to that Google Maps, can you get that up quick? I just want to bring that back up so I understand what you think.
Right behind those vehicles.
So right behind the vehicles.
But I mean, up high, that the plantings are showing above the fence or just?
No, just, I mean...
We have to pick a height, but maybe like a like a six to eight-foot wall or something.
Right, nothing, yeah, I'm not talking 20-feeter. I'm just talking...
You're not trying to shield the entire building?
Right, just a green, something to look at before you see.
Like a hedge roll.
Right.
Okay, or I guess my thought, just for uniformity, as you see the building on the left, which we remodeled, of course, is what about repeating that as a wall at that fence?
That'd be good.
You know what I mean? Because then we'd have the bottom facade and we'd have the cedar above.
That'd be good.
That'd be fine with me also.
I'm sure that we will, yes. Okay, anything else?
You're probably the only guys who can get building material right now.
So the building colors are going to be just like the front building then?
Well, the building, the metal building behind, we haven't really discussed that because we're just looking to get approval to do what we're doing. But I mean, obviously, we got to come back with, you know, the site plan and elevation, stuff like that. But I'm not sure if we're going to do it.
I think what they're talking about, chief, is the wall.
Right, I understand that.
But the building itself, I don't know if we're doing a blue roof and a tan building or, I don't really care what that color is, you know, unless the owner has a specific desire, but I don't think he does.
I think with the combination of the wall and and follow the same color scheme through, I think that'd be very attractive.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so maybe like the gray of what's on the bottom part is the color of the building behind with with this, you know, with a wall still in front.
And a, and a blue roof.
Yeah, I think that would be very appealing then.
Okay. And the, like, that little facade that it has for an overhang on the front of it, that would show the blue roof to the street.
I got a question. Is, you've got an overhead door there, Kurt? Is that going to be a drive-through building then or just?
It's a drive-through building.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense because...
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So if I just, I'm going to interrupt real quick. So I do have a series of 11 conditions. But we did talk about a couple of additional items. One is the the landscape wall with a with a color material scheme to match the main building. Similar to the main building facade, in that the new building would have a gray gray walls to match the main, the the wainscoting on the main building and then a blue roof to match the main building as well. And so those are the only changes I have at this point.
I would make a motion to approve the site plan of operation for Blifford with the conditions that we just, Sean just mentioned.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, that's a motion by, oh, yes, trustee Stigler and a second by Commissioner Piala. I forgot he was on the Plan Commission. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. None. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That that motion passes. And for the Village Board?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
By trustee German and a second?
I'll second.
By trustee Kalinsky. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Item 15, discussion and possible action on an accessory building request. And any necessary waivers for petitioners Mark and Kira Bublitz for the property located at Lot 2 CSM 12035 Milky Way Road, tax key W-A-K-T-135999003 to construct a 40-foot by 56-foot, 2,240-square-foot accessory building to be used for horses, goats, and tractor storage. Planner Malarkey.
Thank you. This is an R1 zone parcel. You may have, some of you may remember, we recently divided this, or it was recently divided along Milky Way to create large, large lots. This this side of Milky Way Road at one time was planned for more dense development, but the developer decided to do large lots. This one happens to be recently purchased and there's a home that's currently going up on it. So the home was approved. It's it's going up here. They're looking for approval for an accessory building at this time. And so in this case, with the drawing that you have in your packet, north is to the to the right. Here's the new home that's going in and then the gradient that surrounds it. Originally, the application showed a proposed barn closer to the house. Here's some, basically, the stormwater management area that's required by the county. The new revision for the location of the barn is further back. And so the the plans that were submitted show two locations. It's the one further to the to the west that's the current location. The reason it was moved is because the petitioner plans to house animals in it, and that's permitted based on the size of the parcel. But that requires at least a 50-foot offset from the property line, so there was no room to do it in this location. So they they moved it further back. It's a 40-foot by 56-foot accessory building and matches, it it meets all the requirements of the ordinance, so I won't belabor that point. The main issue here is that it's a large lot. And what's being proposed as part of the, as part of the development of the project is is it's a, it looks like a farm building, right? But it is metal siding. It's vertical metal siding. And I had a discussion with the with the petitioner that we don't normally approve metal siding for residential lots. Again, it's Zone R1, but it does allow animal units because of the size. And he does propose to have animals in it. It does look like a farm structure. So the materials of the project, I think, needs to be discussed by the Plan Commission and Board. Again, everything else is in conformance with the requirements of the code. Standard conditions here, including a deed restriction for use for residential and ag purposes only. That's the only outstanding condition in in my mind. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? Okay. Any questions or discussion for the Plan Commission?
Oh, I'm sorry. The, so the house, there is plans for the house in the in the document as well. And you can see the house is a fairly traditional, modern home. It doesn't look like a farm home in any way. And so it doesn't necessarily match the materials of the house. What it looks like is it, it's a farm building. And so I think they talked about colors here. I'm looking, yeah, exterior of the building is proposed with a metal roof and siding with colors to match the home. So the colors will match, but...
So the colors do match?
Yeah, the materials, it's a metal building, so the material does not match. But the colors will match. Yeah, the house is, let me go to the house again. No, it's it's actually like, it's horizontal siding with some brick accents and things or some stone accents.
It's a 14-acre lot?
It is.
It's unfortunate this happened to be Zoned R1. I mean, if it was Zoned RE, this wouldn't even be a question. And that's probably what it should have been zoned when they created these lots. It should have probably been changed to RE if that's what the intent was. This kind of activity is allowed in 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 this area because it is the size it is.
Right.
I don't have any issue with what they're proposing. I think it's an appropriate use. I think, I think with that much land and they plan on having horses there. It's an appropriate building for the use that they want to use it for. You're sure not going to put, you know, vinyl siding or aluminum siding or steel siding, you know, that's that you're going to use on your home. You're not going to put on a building that you're going to put a horse in. They're just going to destroy it.
But then why not do a rezon?
Well, let me question the rezones. So residential estate zoning was what you mentioned, RE. That's still a residential zoning district.
Right, but it also allows for farming or allows for animals because of the size of the lot.
So does R1, though. R1 allows for animals because it's, you know, it's six and one, half a dozen. RE would, might be more appropriate because the lot is so large. However, when they came in, it didn't, so essentially, the the land was originally Zoned R1. When the big development came in for this property, they, I think they they rezoned it to R2, but it was conditional zoning based on that development going through. And so it reverted back to R1 because that development never occurred. So it's been R1 for a long time. So, but animals are allowed either way. And so what the code says, let me just tell you what the code says for accessory buildings. The Plan Commission and/or Village Board may require specific elements of an accessory structure, may require specific elements of the accessory structure be compatible with the principal structure, which may include materials, material colors, roof pitch, windows, building massing, and scale. So it doesn't really say anything about residential buildings can't be metal. That's just been a policy in the past that the Plan Commission and the Board has taken and said absolutely no metal for for siding on residences going forward. And so that that's been the direction. But there are different circumstances. This is a, this is a 15-acre lot. It's going to actually be used for ag purposes. And nowhere in the, in the, in the code does it say it has to be a certain material or it has to match specifically. It's it's may and you have some discretion there. So I'm not trying to make a decision on this one way or the other. It's your choice, but what I'm saying is that there is some wiggle room here.
Thank you. Are you the petitioner?
No, I'm the neighbor.
Uh, no, then it's not a public hearing, I'm sorry.
I'm going to agree with what Dan said. I mean, it's what you're saying is that if we had normal R1, we would have been able to, we'd had to keep the the building compatible to the house. But this is larger and it would have been R2, it would have been no problem either. I mean, and it would have been, you can put up a pole barn and have horses and do whatever, but...
Well, but then I go back to why not do a rezon?
Well, I'm, but it's what I'm trying to say, Mike, is that, you know, the the rezon would have solved the problem.
Well, but it wouldn't solve a problem.
Sure would, because now would be better if it went to R, what did you, R2, RE? Yeah, we can do that. It's a...
But you can do, it's still a residential zoning district. The the policy of the Plan Commission and Board, since I've been here anyways, is basically if you're zoned residential, whatever residential district it is, that you don't, you don't, you can't do metal siding, right? You can't do a pole barn, you can't do metal siding. You can do a metal roof, but you have to have horizontal lap siding to 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 match your house or residential purposes. So we we can zone it to ag, but we don't have enough acreage. We need 20 acres to zone it to ag. And so ag, an ag district is different, 100% different, right? Ag buildings are different. But we don't have enough acreage for ag. So whether it's R1 or RE, you can do animals either way, but it's still a residential district. And as far as I understand, the position of the Plan Commission and Board is that residential districts don't get metal siding.
I think my point was a little bit, if it's residential, normally it's not for livestock. And this, just let me finish, Sean. I'm not arguing with you. I'm not agreeing, I'm trying to agree with you, believe it or not.
And I'm not trying to argue.
I think we need to make an exception to this.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to argue. I'm trying to apologize.
No, I'm trying to say is that I think under these circumstances, we need to allow this to go through because it is a larger acreage and we're not going to, and I don't want to stick to the what we normally do because normally this would be a garden shed or something to that effect, you know, or this is not the purpose of this, so I don't really have a problem with it. That was the hardest thing I ever did to try to agree with somebody.
No, and and I'm sorry, I just, I just want to make, I just want to make sure it's clear in my, in my mind that there's, there's, we can't, we can't rezon this to any district that would be considered ag, right? Because you need 20 acres to do ag. So it's going to be residentially zoned, no matter, no matter what what it is, as long as it's under 20 acres. And so that's the only point that I wanted to make, and I apologize again.
I I think having, having materials that match a house has been exaggerated a little bit sometimes because RE zoning was created for formats. And that's, you know, that's the whole purpose of it. So to require a residential-type accessory structure in those areas like you would in a subdivision is totally different.
I I don't disagree with you.
But this is an RE.
I understand that. And that's why, that's why I made the comment, but like Sean said, it's still a residential district. But because of the acreage, I think we can make the exception.
Okay, I I understand your position. I just asked the question, why not do a rezon? That's all I asked.
I don't know if others noticed, but in the application, the applicant mentioned their own flexibility to use materials that match the house.
That is correct. He said, when I discussed this whole issue with him, he said he'd rather not have to do that. But if that's the only way to get this approved, he would be open to doing it.
Mr. President, can we do a motion?
Certainly, you're prerogative.
I have a comment, quit if I could.
Sure, go ahead, Mr..
I know in the past, we do have compatible material. And I'm with, I think, everybody else, I get in agreement that most of these are, in some divisions, they like to match their homes. And they got one-acre lots, whatever, and and it makes it desirable to look. But like in this distance, this instance here, that's 14 acres, and I think there's a great exception to let the metal, you know, go go by on this one. And I think we may make some good notes in here why we made that decision and this is, so if it comes back down the road, it doesn't come and haunt us. But I think we make some greater notes in here why we let it go by so we don't have come back. I'll take one more. Everybody's thinking that one, I would guess, because I've been, you know, done this, you know, and and really wanted people to match their houses and I'm a firm believer in that and pass a lot of them that way, denied a lot of them that way, made people do do certain things on their homes. And I just want to make it, you know, 100% clear why we're letting this, if it goes by, why we let this one go through with metal.
I want to make a motion to approve this building.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Webb and a second by trustee Stigler. Is there any further discussion? For the Plan Commission, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? And that passes six to one, with myself in opposition. And to the Town Board?
I'll move.
The Village Board. Whoa.
Should have like a jar.
That could be a recall.
From the Village Board?
I move that we accept the recommendations of the Plan Commission.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Kalinsky and a second by trustee German. Any further discussion? Or are we done?
I just, I just asked a question earlier off off mic. I'm just curious about the the rationale behind the metal, the metal siding requirement. So why, why do we have that if we're just going to grant exceptions? Because the accessory structure, I mean, it's not even close to the residence.
So I'll tell you what I heard and then others can chime in if they'd like. What I heard is, and we have been relatively firm on that for as much as, how long as I've been involved in the the Town and Village Board. But what I heard is that because of the size of this lot, it is not quite as pertinent as it is. And your neighbors are not as densely packed. And really, when you're trying to do those design considerations, a lot of that is to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, the integrity of the community, and for lack of a better word, respect to your neighbors, to make things look consistent. What I heard from others is that it doesn't necessarily apply in this case because of where the property is, very much because of the size of the property and how the building is going to be used.
In any zoning, it's always gonna be a residential, 'cause it is not twenty acres.
And that too. It can't go to ag. Any, certainly. And any further discussion?
If it's any consolation, anybody, I know this property and this barn is gonna be way down on the bottom of a hill, too. It's not even gonna be that visible once you put a house in front of it, so.
Okay, the motion was to accept the recommendation of the plan commission. It was made by trustee Kalinsky and seconded by trustee German. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? That passes four to one, with myself in opposition. Thank you. Item sixteen, discussion and possible action on a condominium plat request for petitioner Greg Thompson, Doing Businesses Storage Shop USA, for the property located at W-two-three-nine-S-three-eight-nine-nine Big Bend Road, tax key W A K T one-three-five-one-nine-nine-six-zero-zero-four, for a condominium plat for the Storage Shop USA development, which are twenty-six individual units and thirteen buildings for general business, trades, and personal workspaces, including offices, indoor storage, and workshops. Uh, this is for the plan commission and the village board. Planner Malarkey.
Uh, thank you. I will be brief here. Uh, this was approved, the, the, the project itself, the rezoning from R-two to B-three, the site plan plan of operation, signage, exchange of lands, CSM was all approved in 2020. The condo plat has not yet been, uh, approved and recorded, so this is sort of the last piece of the puzzle. Um, this is gonna allow him to sell the individual units. Um, and again, we, we talked about the condo plat in general as part of the previous approvals. The, for those of you who weren't around, just very quickly, again, this is twenty-six individual units and thirteen buildings uh, that allows, it's, 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 it's B-three zone, but it's, it's tailored to the specific use, which allows only general businesses, trades, and personal workspace, including offices, indoor storage, and workshops limited to no more than two employees onsite, onsite retail, service businesses which require customer drop-off and pickup, commercial fabrication and manufacturing, overnight outdoor parking, overnight sleeping in units, and outdoor storage is prohibited. And then each, each person that buys one of these units needs to come back for the planning commission and board to get their individual plan of operation approved to make sure it meets those conditions. Just, that's not really important to the condo plat, but some of you weren't, uh, part of the process, and so just so you have a better sense of what this development is. Condo plats are required to be reviewed per our land division ordinance in the same manner as subdivision plats are, which is normally a preliminary plat and final plat. The petitioner has requested that, um, the preliminary condo plat be waived in favor of the final condominium plat, largely because we've seen this, um, month after month when it was actually approved, and nothing has changed here in terms of the layout. So he, he is asking for a, um, for a waiver for the, for the preliminary plat. Um, I don't have any comments necessarily on the layout of the condo plat. I, I think Chris has a couple of, um, minor comments on that, but I did wanna talk about the declaration of condo documents. That was also submitted as part of this, and I just have a couple things. Uh, in the definition, section three-point-oh-one, uh, it references a few prohibited activities, but doesn't include all the prohibited activities that were allowed, outlined as part of the approval of the development. The stuff that I just read, all the things that were, uh, not allowed, and so I'm asking that that be made consistent with the section six-oh-one, or at least reference six-oh-one for clarity. They do have a section on parking in section five-point-oh-two. One of the requirements of the approval, that there be no parking on the twenty-four-foot drivelanes. I would request that, that language be added to the, uh, condominium documents that states that there's no parking allowed in those twenty-four-foot drivelanes. And then finally, in section six-point-oh-one, it talks about commercial purposes only, and states that any, any, um, any commercial woodworking would need to be approved by the plan commission and the board uh, when they seek their individual plans of operation. One of the things that we prohibit is commercial fabrication and manufacturing. And so the question is, is commercial woodworking, would we consider that commercial fabrication and, um, and manufacturing? And so we could maybe squash that right now and, and determine whether or not we would consider that to be, so that would not be allowed in their condominium documents. And so, Chris, do you have any comments at all, or anything worth mentioning for the, for the, um, technical?
I, I do have, uh, a report I prepared. Is it worth mentioning? Maybe not, but I'm gonna read it anyway.
Oh, well, now wait. This is critical information.
We understand that the applicant has requested a waiver from presenting the preliminary condominium plat and to proceed directly with the final condominium plat process. We've got no concerns with that request. Uh, in addition, we have reviewed the plat and find that the plat as presented satisfies the village and state requirements for condominium plats.
I would have asked.
Easy, easy.
Trying to say, "commercial woodworking" or "woodworking"?
He, he, in, in the condo docs, he, he says "commercial woodworking." So woodworking is a hobby or whatever. It's fine. But he's saying "commercial woodworking." There's a specific caveat that says that has to be approved or specific insurance has to be sought as part of that. Um, and so we outright prohibit commercial manufacturing and fabrication. So is woodworking, commercial woodworking, considered commercial fabrication and manufacturing? I, I don't have enough experience to know, but I'm looking for input, so I can just go back and tell them, hey, that's not gonna fly in the condo docs. Take it out.
My, my opinion is, I think it can be. Depends to what level you wanna take it. So I would say, you know, not allow it, and if they wanna come in and request it, and maybe we can review it on an individual basis. I'd be fine with that, but.
If we left it in, if we left it in as, okay, maybe. Each individual plan of operation needs to be approved anyways, so at that time, we could say yea or nay would be considered commercial fabrication or manufacturing. Does, does that sound like it would work, or do you think we should take it out entirely?
I just don't want any confusion.
I don't either, and that's why I brought it up.
The buyers.
That's, that, Chris just mentioned the same thing. What if someone buys one of these things, and that's what they wanna do, and they can't get approved?
I imagine the concern with commercial fabrication was the noise with the machinery. So if anybody's been around a, a thickness planer or a shaper, run off three-phase, I mean, they wear hearing protection for a reason.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I mean, even the blowers they use for sucking the dust collection and the shavings and things make a lot of noise, so yeah, I would say leave it out.
Yeah.
Can, do we have consensus that that's not allowed?
Right. For commercial.
For commercial woodworking, yes. You can do hobby woodworking, yeah. Thanks for your view it as well. We could, we could table it, and then.
Could table it.
I'll make a motion that we table this to the next meeting in July until everything's complete.
I'll second it. I'll second that. This is a motion and a second by commissioner Buchholz and president Dorr to table this to July eighth. All those in favor on the plan commission, uh, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Discussion of Waukesha Shoreland zoning adoption and public hearing schedule.
Yeah, this is the good, this is the good stuff. Um, this'll take two minutes. Um, I've been working with Waukesha County to get, to get them, to get the maps, uh, the maps updated, and they've been very, very busy. They're working on it. They promised to get something done, and I've seen some drafts. They promised to get something done by the end of next week. But that sets our schedule back a little bit. Originally, we were talking about having a special plan commission and board meeting in the last Thursday of this month. We're not gonna be able to make that. We don't necessarily wanna hold the public hearing the week of the Fourth of July, which is the July eighth meeting, just because it's a, you know, it's a bigger deal with the Shoreland zoning. So we are talking about potentially holding the public hearing the fourth week, the fourth Thursday in July at the regular board meeting, if the plan commission is available to attend. And so that's, that's all I have, and I'll let you discuss.
So this is mostly pertinent to the plan commissioners, because you're not usually here on the fourth Thursday in July. Is that a commitment that you'll make to the community? No pressure. Um, the date would be July twenty-second. I'm trying to figure out if I'm on vacation. Am I on vacation that week, the twenty-second? That's the weekend after, that's the week after, doesn't it? I'm on vacation, but we're not going anywhere.
The alternative would be to wait a couple weeks after and wait for the regular August plan commission board meeting.
You wanna do that?
I will be out of town the following day. Would you say twenty-first?
Yeah.
Twenty-second?
Let's, let's make it the, the eighth. Or, uh, August what?
Twelve.
August twelfth. What's that? All right, so the public hearing will be August twelfth. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Is that all?
That's it.
All right. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn by commissioner Buchholz. Second by commissioner Piala. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Moving on to the village board. The accounts payable in the amount of forty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-ten dollars and thirty-four cents. Is there a motion to approve the payment of the bills in that amount?
I so move.
By trustee German, second.
I'll second.
By trustee Kalinsky. Any discussion? All those, uh, roll call vote, please.
German.
Aye.
Grecky.
Aye.
Kalinsky.
Aye.
Stigler.
Aye.
Dorr.
Aye. Thank you. And a motion to adjourn for the village board.
I'll second.
By Kalinsky and second by German. All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all.